Well, hey, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. We're glad to see you, all those joining online on Facebook and YouTube and those joining here in person, especially a very special guest that we have here today and I'm sure we'll hear a little bit more from, we just heard from, actually, but might hear a little bit more from here in just a bit. As you walked in today, we'd love to remind you that you could have picked up the meeting agenda packet. That packet outlines everything we have going on today at the commission meeting. You can also access all the supporting documents, too, and we really encourage you to do that. All the information we have as a commission and staff is contained in those supporting documents. You can access those at sedgwickcounty.org, so we encourage you to do so. We want to also let everyone know today that Commissioner Wise is joining us today. She's called in via Zoom. And Commissioner, if you have anything to interject, we sometimes put our heads down and go right to business, so you might have to yell aloud and just interrupt us, but want the public to be aware that Commissioner Wise is joining us online today. So, that being said, why don't we get to work? Call the meeting to order for Wednesday, July 23rd, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Reverend Wade Miller of Hillside Christian Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
When I first started seminary, I had a professor, Rufus Burrow, and he would tell us pretty much every day in class, he said, "I do not envy you. You have to tell people that are not ready to hear what you want to say." And it was a reminder of the service that we do when we are public servants and when we serve the greater good, not just for ourselves, but for our community and certainly on my behalf, for the Church of Jesus Christ. So, let us join together in an attitude of prayer. Oh, holy and beloved God, we give thanks for the blessing of this day, for the blessing of this morning, for these public servants who have come to do the good work of our county, to care for its residents, to look after the needs that come to them often and from so many different directions. Oh, God, we pray that you give them wisdom, that you give our community voice, and through these things that we find the best way forward, not the easiest way, not the most politically expedient way, the best way, your way. And so, God, let your Spirit be in them and in each of us as we serve faithfully for your community and as we serve in your name. We lift our hearts and our spirits to you as we seek your presence here in this meeting today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Miller, thank you, sir, for being here today. And also, I want a special thanks to Hillside Christian Church and all the efforts that your congregation is around the homeless issues, particularly in our community, showing up the table and helping to shape these outcomes. So, Reverend, thank you, sir, for being here.
I'm just going to get my packet, I'm not leaving.
Yes, sir. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Rule call. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcement.
Morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Today, we're going to be a little wonky for you. We're going to bookend with good news. So, we're going to start with good news from the Fire District. Yesterday, Sedgwick County Fire District One and the Office of the State Fire Marshal held a press conference introducing Violet as she prepares to join the Fire District One search and rescue operations. Violet is a 15-month-old highly chain Belgian Malinois. I knew I was going to mess it up. Violet's handler, firefighter Josh Smith, gave a live demonstration showcasing her skills, and they are here today to say hello. Sir, you want to come on up to the podium? Like we said, 15 months. Josh has been her handler for six months. These are some photos from other times and yesterday also, and then at one point here shortly. This is the demonstration that they did yesterday for the media.
So, Brad Crisp, Sedgwick County Fire District One. Commissioners, on behalf of Sedgwick County Fire District One and the citizens of Sedgwick County, we just want to say thank you for your support, not only for the fire district, but for our abilities to go out and provide these kinds of services to not only our community, but communities regionally and throughout the United States. The partnership with the State Fire Marshal's office is a very good partnership, and we know that firefighter Smith and her partner, his partner, Vi, is what we call her, are going to be a really great asset, not only for Sedgwick County, but also throughout the state and throughout the region. Firefighter Smith is here. He'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. You'll notice in that video, she was locked in on a scent cone. She bypassed the folks that were just standing out there and were obviously not distressed. She knows if you're just standing there and you're just one of the people looking, she was looking for the person that was lost and distressed, which was Nicole. And once she locked in on that scent cone, it took her no time to go find her. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for letting us be here this morning.
Well, appreciate this. And Violet, welcome. Firefighter Smith, welcome. Could you tell us a little bit, what all is in the purview and the scope of her work? What all type of calls do you go on? What does this dog do for our community?
Yeah. So, Violet is considered a live find canine, and it's mainly disaster instead of like, not like a tracking sort of canine, but disaster, like tornadoes, hurricanes, floods, things like that, where we would have potentially live victims that we can't find as humans in a reasonable amount of time. Violet can find them way much quicker and more efficient, so.
This is obviously for the use for Sedgwick County and our citizens here, but do we also get requests to go throughout the state or are there any other? I mean, I know that this is a resource that not every fire department has, so.
She wants her toy.
Yes, sir.
So, Violet is available definitely to Sedgwick County and our citizens, and then she can go regionally, statewide, and eventually nationwide. But first off, she's always available to Sedgwick County and our citizens.
Wonderful. Commissioners, any questions or comments? I wish my kids were that well behaved, I mean, honestly. You did a good job.
She's still a puppy, for sure, but yeah, she's doing good.
Well, what a great resource. Appreciate you sharing her with us and sharing her with the community and the work it takes to not only just take care of a dog like that and that asset that we have here in Sedgwick County, but also to do it with the care that you do, and we appreciate you, firefighter.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, as we said, Violet is currently undergoing life search and rescue training, and she's on track to receive her certification, making her fully deployable in December. So, yes, that's our exciting, fun visitor for the morning. Okay. Next up, the first public budget hearing for Sedgwick County will be July 30th, which is one week from today, at 6:00 PM in this room, the lower-level auditorium of the Ruffin Building at 100 North Broadway. This is your chance to provide feedback directly to the Board of County Commissioners and the 2026, about the 2026 recommended budget. Citizens can also leave their comments online at our public forum, which can be found at The Sedgwick County Health Department is offering free mosquito dunks to help residents reduce mosquito populations around their homes. These easy-to-use products target mosquito larvae and standing water and are safe for people, pets, and wildlife. To request your free mosquito dunks, call 316-660-7300 during normal business hours to arrange a pickup. The 2025 primary election is just a few weeks away. Advanced in-person voting started Monday at the Sedgwick County Election Office and will continue Monday through Friday until noon on Monday, August 4th. Satellite locations will open for advanced voting next Thursday, July 31st. Next up, I have Sheriff's Officer Brandon Stitt here. He's going to give some information about the fund run and also some county good news on his end. Sir?
Hey, Brandon, welcome, bud.
Morning, Commissioners. Brandon Stitt with the Sheriff's Office, and we're excited to share that this Saturday we will be hosting our first-ever sheriff benefit fund run at Sedgwick County Park, and this is an event that brings the community together in a fun and active way for a great cause. This event is a 5K and a two-mile walk because it is July, so it might be a little tense. And it's being organized to raise funds for a very important initiative with the Sheriff's Office, and it's our annual Christmas food box drive. I highlighted that back in December with all of you, Commissioner Bluebaugh and Commissioner Wise. I can show you the video and highlight that. I don't think you guys were here yet, but it's something that we are very proud to continue to do, and this is the first time that we've had this type of fundraiser to raise funds for that. So, here to tell you a little bit more about the benefit fund and this fundraiser and other fundraising efforts that we're trying to do is our President of the Sheriff's Benefit Fund and Detective Kyle Bresson.
Detective, welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me be here today. As Brandon said, this is our first annual fund run that we've done to raise some funds. I know I came back, Sergeant Hefner at the time came back as our president and briefed you guys a little bit on what the benefit fund does. Every holiday, we feed approximately 400 families. Those food boxes are estimated about $100 worth of food, so it's a very hefty project for us. It's all based on funds that we raise strictly through donations to the community, events. This one is our first fundraiser run that we are doing this Saturday. We have approximately 110, 115 runners that are coming. It is going to be July, so it's going to be warm. We do have the Wichita Crime Commission out there. They're going to give us some waters and some food for our runners and help support them. So, we're just trying to find different ways to run, raise these funds. Approximately $40,000 comes out that we raise each year to pay for these boxes. We do have donations. People did just donate for the run that don't want to run. People can still do that. We are still taking some last-minute requests if people want to come out and walk, run with us, whatever they'd like to do. So, once again, we support your guys, we appreciate your guys' support for the Sheriff's Office and the benefit fund. Each year, we do this. The holidays will be here before we know it, so we're cruising along quickly.
Detective, you mentioned the number of families. How many families did you say this helped support?
Approximately about 400. We tried to feed 400 families. Two boxes of food, $100 each.
That's wonderful. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, I'm thinking that's like $40,000 if you do the math, and that's a really large challenge, so I'm glad you guys are doing this and doing it early. But as I'm looking at this, I see this scan me, which doesn't really work at the moment. Can you please tell us a phone number or a website that someone can go to, and how much does it cost and that type of thing?
Sure. If you go to Run Wichita or search the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office Fund Run, it'll bring you straight through Google to the website sign up. The registration is closed right now, just based on we have to provide some shirts and medals and those type of things. We do have last-minute registration. You can email Audrey Beard at audrey@sedgwick.gov or call Sheriff Investigations 660-5300. Ask for Audrey or myself, and we can get some people signed up last minute if they'd like to join us.
Again, and so if they pay that, assuming there's some kind of a charge to be a participant?
Yeah. The last-minute fee, we were just asking a $20 donation. We can't guarantee a t-shirt or medal because we've already ordered those type of things, but we'd love people to come donate, hang out with us, run, and help support the food box cause.
And then next year, if they do, what will be the recommended donation next year?
So, online, it's a $35 fee, and then there's a small transaction fee, $2.50 or $3.00 that is paid that goes to the company that helps us run the website. The $35 all go straight to the fund run. Up here, we have some sponsors. Thanks to those sponsors, they have covered all of our upfront costs, so everybody that runs, all that, that your donation goes straight to the food box program.
Well, sometimes I do campaign stuff. I always try to do some fundraising, but I never thought about putting the word "fun" in the word "fundraising," but that's a good idea, so I might steal that one.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate what you do. It's going to be great this year, I'm sure.
Detective, thank you so much. Thanks to Sheriff's Office, all the work that you guys do for this community. It's important.
Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Appreciate you. And next, I would like to introduce Jeremy Knoll, and he serves as the President of our FOP Lodge 74, and he's also a forensic investigator with the Sheriff's Office. Two weeks ago, Jeremy deployed to Kerrville, and he was part of the, it was part of the Fraternal Order of Police Disaster Area Response Team, which is the National Fraternal Order of Police to help provide critical relief and support to the first responders in the wake of the disaster in Texas. He's also been selected as CAKE's hometown hero, which, if you guys watched that, a lot of county employees that we're very proud of are recognized by CAKE, so he's also been selected for that. I don't know the exact date of when that will air, but we're very proud of Jeremy, and he's here to share his experience with you guys. Jeremy, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you, sir. Brandon told me I had 30 minutes to talk, so if I go over, just let me know. Just to give a little bit of background, so the National FOP, they started the DART Crew back in 2019. It was kind of a post-Katrina kind of response deal, wherein they realized that law enforcement were in the middle of a devastated area, and they needed food, they needed help, and they still had to work. So, the National FOP put this team together, and since 2019, we fed about 70,000 meals to first responders and to anybody that shows up at the tent just looking for a meal. I joined the team this year, and on July 8th, I received an email that said the team was going to be deployed to Kerrville for the flood response. Sunday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the 9th, I drove down, drove through all night, got there Thursday morning, and that was my first experience to meet this team of people. They came from Connecticut, Oklahoma, Missouri, just everywhere across the country to come help. And so, on that first day, we got the trailer set up, and when this team first started, they had a 20-foot trailer, I'm sorry, 28-foot trailer that they gutted, and they put a bunch of kitchen stove kind of things in, so that's where they cooked out of, but they quickly realized that this was not going to cut it. So, they ended up getting a old NASCAR trailer, which is what you see here in the photo. They gutted it, and it's basically a galley kitchen kind of a setup, and so that's where we can feed up to 5,000 meals a day from this trailer. And we were only there for three days on this deployment, and we fed about 800 different meals. And one of the things, too, that was great to see about this group is a lot of those first responders that need something to eat, they couldn't leave their post. They were stationed somewhere, and they couldn't go. So, we delivered to them. We were able to go out and just get the food to them and let them eat. One other thing that we do provide, too, is also a remediation crew. So, if there's a first responder in that devastated area that their house is completely destroyed, we can send a team of people to that house to start the cleanup process so they can go to work and focus on their community, and we can go help them at home so they don't have to worry about what's going on there. So, great opportunity. We got to talk to a lot of the first responders who, you know, experienced that disaster firsthand. Billy Graham from the, I'm sorry, William Graham from the Billy Graham Association came by and talked to us. It was just a great opportunity. I received support from our sheriff, from Colonel Allen, all the way down to my own sergeant who texted me every day just to check on me, make sure I was doing good. So, it was a great opportunity, and I was happy to do it, and we're going to be more prepared for the next time with more equipment to take with us, so we'll be better able to respond.
Jeremy, this is wonderful. Appreciate you, Sheriff's Office, and Sheriff Easter and the team for allowing you to do this. The FOP, it's a big deal. We also had Dylan White, firefighter White, from Sedgwick County Fire Department also went down on the state team to Kerrville and was down there and sending back some pictures and looking at some of the devastation and looking at the water, which you testified to. He was sending pictures of bridges that had 35 feet of water upwards on it in just a matter of moments, and so I'm sure what you saw, I'm sure, but your experience of stories you heard were life-changing, and just grateful that you went down and represented our community and was able to serve the way you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
That's all we have for today.
Okay. Good announcements today. County good news, from dogs to floods and everything in between. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Public Agenda.
Okay, we had no one sign up for Public Agenda today, so we're moving along. Next item, please.
Proclamations, Item A, Proclamation Declaring National Emergency Management Awareness Month.
Yes, we've asked Commissioner Howell to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate this. It's a great honor to do this today. Proclamation reads, "Whereas emergencies and disasters can occur unexpectedly, posing significant threats to life, property, and the environment; and whereas local emergency managers, community leaders, state governments, and Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, dedicate countless hours to developing preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation programs to protect the lives and property of all persons living in the United States and the U.S. Territories; and whereas the emergency managers serve the nation by responding to countless emergencies and disasters each year, demonstrating commitment, compassion, and professionalism in protecting the public; and whereas the efforts of our nation's emergency managers have helped millions of community members across the United States recover, rebuild, and become more resilient in the face of adversity. Now therefore, we get resolved that Chairman Ryan Beatty and the Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month, and we encourage all citizens to express their sincere appreciation for emergency managers in every sector who work diligently to prepare, protect, and serve our cities, counties, state, tribes, territories, regions, and organizations against all hazards and risks. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion we would adopt this proclamation."
Yeah, I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
I'll hand this in, and I would make a few comments if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I just love the good announcements this morning. We have such a series of this going on between the dogs and the meals and the floods and the support that has been, if you will, supported by so many good people, but really, one of the agencies that's, I think, is long, is almost forgotten by most people until it happens, till it's a situation that happens, and we realize how important it is. And that's exactly what you do, Julie and Cody and others on your team. Emergency preparedness is a core function of government of Sedgwick County and really every government that wants to be prepared for bad things when they happen. And when the worst day happens, we have a plan. We have people who know exactly what to do. They've thought it out, they've practiced, and our community can, I guess, rest knowing that there's someone out there that's thinking ahead. So, I have a great admiration and appreciation for what you guys do, and I think it's incredibly fitting that you guys are recognized with this proclamation today.
Yeah. Julie?
All right, thank you. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. As mentioned, Julie Simpson, your Emergency Management Director. On behalf of our department, I do thank you for issuing this proclamation. This is the inaugural National Emergency Management Awareness Month. The proclamation not only honors the work and dedication of the EM staff and volunteers, but also highlights the importance of the local community preparedness and resiliency efforts. Whether it's planning for severe weather, coordinating response resources, or helping residents and businesses recover from a disaster, we are there. A lot of work is done behind the scenes, like you mentioned. Most folks think of emergency management as the tornado siren guys make a lot of noise on Monday mornings during our test, but we're there through all the different phases of disasters, including the long-term recovery that often happens. We are actually hosting, August 21st, we're actually helping, hosting an open house for Emergency Operations Center. We'll invite our senior officials, our elected officials, and our emergency response and recovery partners to come visit the Emergency Operations Center, spend some time with us. More information will come out on Times. We're going to have three different presentation times to kind of discuss what we do, show some photos of us in action, so that will be coming up shortly. As the proclamation mentions, I also ask everyone to support the emergency managers throughout the community. They may not have that title, but they're somebody who is preparing organizations and cities and communities for the bad things that we hope never happen. EMs are found in local government, colleges and universities, hospitals, the larger businesses, faith-based organizations, and even some of our nonprofit organizations. So, throughout the month of August, I ask folks to reach out to those who are having those duties and responsibilities to plan for those things that we just wish never happened. Also, as the nation emphasizes local preparedness and local response, I think this is a very timely proclamation. Again, I appreciate your support in issuing this proclamation to bring awareness to this. Thank you very much.
Julie, well, we're proud to support it and proud to support all emergency management folks at work and all the volunteers.
Yes.
That your organization has and works with throughout the community. Two quick comments. One is, recently with the floods that we had here in the Wichita-Sedgwick County area, your leadership really brought some stability and some guidance, and you activated media. You guys and your team, it was fabulous to watch you work, and you're right, Commissioner Howell is exactly correct that many times we don't realize your impact until we have to be reactive. But I'm also very appreciative of the preventative things that your organization does. When I first got on the commission, you launched Civic Ready Alerts. Anytime you're at the mic, I always want to give you the opportunity to let our community know about these alerts and to sign up for them. Would you just give a quick briefer on Civic Ready Alerts?
Yeah, absolutely. So, it's a public mass notification system. It's another tool in the toolbox to stay informed of what's going on in the communities. Civic Ready, we can find it on our county webpage, our emergency management webpage, social media. We have flyers. Anytime we go out and do outreach, we have cards that we issue out to folks to sign up. Folks have to go in, and you guys get to select what you want to be notified of and how. Do you want emails, text messages, phone calls, all three? The member gets to choose what they want to be notified of, and a lot of our communities also use it to issue community bulletins, so announcements that may be within the city. Say, you know, if there's a key road closure or if City Hall has to close unexpectedly, they can use that mass notification system to let the folks know. So, we encourage everyone to sign up. It is free to the user, so it's absolutely just another tool in the toolbox. We always emphasize having more than one way to receive critical information, and this is just another method to get that information.
100% agree. It's really transformative, so we appreciate your leadership, happy to celebrate this proclamation and all that you guys do in Sedgwick County. Okay, we'd love to get a picture to celebrate. Is that okay?
And I will mention, I have three of my members out doing training today, so it is just me and Cody here today. But yes, we are a department of five, and like you mentioned, we've got several hundred volunteers as well.
Hundreds of volunteers. You guys do a great job coordinating in this community. So, we want to take a picture to celebrate. You give us about five minutes to step out in the form.
Thank you.
We'll celebrate this proclamation. We'll celebrate this proclamation. Okay, we're back. Thank you for your patience. We wanted to celebrate Julie and her great team and the proclamation for August. So let's move on. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments, item B. Accept the resignation of Suzanne Haynes from the Sedgwick County Fourth District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Justin Wagner, County Counselor. It's okay with Chairman Commissioners, I propose to read off items B through G on your agenda this morning. They're all either resignation or appointments to county boards. As Madam Clerk read, the first item is resignation of Suzanne Haynes from District Four Citizens Advisory Board. Item C is a resolution appointing Nima Masala to that same advisory board. Item D is a resolution appointing Aaron Stevens to, to board with an MABCD, the Board of Electrical Appeals. Item E involves resolutions reappointing David Urban, Christopher Vale, and Steve Vossman to the Board of Electrical Appeals. Item F is a, are resolutions reappointing Jesse Keely, William Lowenstein, Scott Smith, and Randy Freeman to what we call the Mechanical Board. It's a long, long title. And then item G is a, are includes resolutions reappointing Taylor Zimbalman, Eric Perkey, Miles Millsbaugh, and Brad Rice to the Building Code Standards and Appeals Board. The, you could consolidate these into a single motion to take the recommended actions, those items B through G, which would be to accept the resignation and adopt all of those resolutions.
Okay, Commissioners, I'll make a motion to combine all these things. Why don't we do it this way? We'll make a motion, see if we can get a vote. Anybody that's here today that is being sworn in, our county clerk, Kelly Arnold, can swear you in. You can come down here to the podium after we take the vote and we'll invite you to make some comments and the Commissioners can also apply some comments on each of these individuals. So all approved, we go that way? Okay. All right. I'll move to approve the, and adopt the resolutions in items B through G. Second, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, and Mr. Kelly Arnold, sir, welcome.
Morning Commissioners, please come on down. All right, raise your right hand.
Can I look this way?
You can, either way, work for me. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Fourth District Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Nima?
I just want to say I deeply love its community. I have a very unique background and perspective and I look forward to serving well alongside you guys.
Yeah, well, Nima, thank you for joining the Fourth District Citizens Advisory Board. Let me first acknowledge Suzanne Haynes, who's dropping off for some, she's got a new business, she's got grandkids, she's very busy and wasn't able to give the attention that she felt that she needed to, to the cab. So I appreciate her service on that cab and we are delighted to have you. You and I worked together in various spaces throughout our district and our community, obviously through staying together, but also through the foster care community. And your story and your testimony is widely known in the foster care circle, so your advocacy is deeply appreciated. You're going to be a great contribution to this board, so thank you, Nima.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate you. Okay, Commissioners, any other comments or on any of these actions that we took in items B through G? I would just broadly say we appreciate anyone willing to serve in these, in these fashions on all the boards. The MABCD Board of Electrical Appeals and the, all the boards that contain with that, these are significant and they really help to shape policy and direction on all that we have here in the community with our builders, with our construction department, with the permitting processes and the regulations. It's rather significant. So those that are willing to serve in these various positions, we're grateful for you. Thank you for your willingness to serve. So, okay, we're going to keep moving. On to new business. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on July 17th, 2025.
There's Joe Thomas.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purcelling Director. I think one day I'll learn not to touch the mic. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of July 17th results in three items that we're bringing before you for your approval. The first one is the on-call roofing services for various departments and this recommendation is to accept all the proposals as listed at the rates shown for a period of two years with three one-year options to renew. Our second item is the architectural and engineering services, design and construction for EMS Post One for Project Services. Recommendation is to accept the proposal from Haney and Associates Architects and it's in the amount of $69,500. Our final item for today is the parking garage elevators for Project Services and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Icon Structures in the amount of $117,196. Be happy to try to answer any questions and recommend approval.
Okay, Joe, thank you for that detail. Any questions on what's on our bid board today? Okay, seeing none. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts for July 17th, 2025.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Joe, thanks, sir. Appreciate you. Why don't we pause real quick before we head into the consent agenda? I want to pause the Board of County Commission meeting and I'd like to convene the governing body of fire district number one and call that meeting to order. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Blubow.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye. So present, sorry.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
Public agenda.
No one has signed up for public agenda for the fire district? We'll keep moving. Next item.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items A, B, and C this morning on fire agenda.
Yeah. Let me just acknowledge one of the items on here have to deal with a charitable donation of land from Casey Land Holdings. Want to appreciate their, their willingness to work with our, with our fire district, with our fire team to assist us in making sure that we have capacity to do the things that we need to do for the fire district. So very grateful for that. And the other item here is really just correction of deed and language and some of the things that might have been mistaken a little bit on the deed. Those are being corrected. But again, thank you so much for those that are willing to donate the land. Any questions on consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other for the fire district? Okay, seeing none, next item.
Executive session.
We have no executive session for the fire district, so we'll officially adjourn the fire district and let the chief get on about his business and we'll reconvene the meeting of the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners. Onto the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items I through S on regular agenda.
Okay, Commissioners, we've all had a chance to review and discuss the consent agenda. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items I through S.
Second.
A motion and a second. We're on a roll today. Commissioner Meitzner?
I'm very wordy today.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. Before I call the next item, I'd like to request an off-agenda item to be added to the agenda today. So I'll make a motion and I move that the board amends its agenda to add an off-agenda item regarding a resolution to delegate authority with respect to the National Center for Aviation Training Sublease. That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to add an off-agenda item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, Samantha, off-agenda item, take it away.
Good morning, Samantha Seeng, Assistant County Counselor. I'm here to present the request for approval of improvements at National Center for Aviation Training, also known as NCAT. All right. Pursuant to our county home rule powers, the board and the county can purchase and hold real property and for the use of the county in land, so for taxes as provided by law under 19-101. Fourth, all contracts and all other acts in relation to properties and concerns of the county necessary to exercise its corporate and administrative powers. We've got several agreements related to NCAT. In December 6th of 2006, the Wichita Airport Authority entered into a lease, a 50-year lease with the Sedgwick County Public Building Commission. This is what we call the base lease for this NCAT. On December 2nd of 2008, the PPC leased, subleased NCAT to Sedgwick County. On April 6th, 2011, the county then subleased it to the Wichita Area Technical College and also to Wichita State University. There's an operation agreement between the county and WSU Tech. Just for the record, Wichita Area Technical College was replaced by WSU Tech. Under Section 6 of the sublease, any capital improvements by WSU Tech shall be subject to prior approval by the county. Before any improvements can be made, a detailed scope of work and drawings applicable shall be submitted for review to the county. Resolution 201-08 and 208-09 previously delegated the county manager authority to review construction changes and change orders and whatnot. Those items have already been completed and so that authority no longer exists. Currently, WSU Tech contacted the county and let us know that there will be improvements at NCAT. They're planning to expand by building a new 85,000-plus square foot facility and install a hangar and add modern classrooms, hands-on labs, and high-tech training spaces. We're talking about $45 million investments for the facility and technology. Construction is scheduled to begin in August of 2025 with classes scheduled to start in January of 2027. As part of this new expansion, they're going to, this is, this expansion is going to be on city property, but as part of this expansion, they have to connect the sanitary sewer for the new building to the current campus, which is on county property. So this improvement requires the county's approval under the sublease. The recommendation today is to adopt the proposed resolution and in order to streamline the process and not have to go through the board for every, any type of future improvements, we're asking that you delegate the power to the Director of Public Works to review the improvements and to make sure it conforms with applicable engineering standards and specification. We also ask that you delegate to the Chief Financial Officer the task of approving any capital improvements at NCAT for compliance with any financial rules and regulations as bonds were issued in 2008 when this facility was, the campus was first constructed. Any approval by the county would require both the Director of Public Works and CFO's written approval to proceed. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Okay, Samantha, appreciate it. I think I have a pretty good understanding of what's taking place here and the reasons, the mechanism as to why we need this off-motion item in this discussion, but let's make sure we can vet all this out publicly and Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you. Just, I'm just reminded since I serve on the WSU Tech board, are we in communication with the attorneys at Wichita State? And I only say this because I think, I want to make sure we have the official name correct because I think, I don't know if legally it's called Wichita State University of Applied Sciences or something like that versus WSU Tech. It doesn't matter. I think it's, it's the right thing we need to do. I just want to make sure that we use the correct identifier. I just text Dr. U-Tash, so I don't know.
Commissioner Wise, you are absolutely correct. It's, I cannot remember what the acronym is, but it has to do with Wichita State University Sciences and Applied something, something.
Right, right.
And I just can't remember off the top of my head, but yes, it's, but I think the resolution has the correct title for the WSU Tech and, so WSU Tech is the correct acronym. I mean, I had put down the denomination as WSU Tech.
Justin, this- And Commissioner Meitzner may supplement what Sam indicated as well, that the resolution doesn't really change anything underlying in the agreement in that regard, just changes how we're delegating authority on the county's end.
Right.
It identifies the agreement, April 6th, 2011, and sublease agreement. So I think that what Sam's presented, even, even if it were technically just slightly off, wouldn't alter the agreement in any regard in that scope.
Yeah, it's a, it's an internal document for us. Okay. We're fine. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. Did this pop up suddenly? I mean, this is off agenda. I'm just wondering, do we not know about this?
I'm going to defer that question to the CFO.
Okay. Good morning, Lindsay.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Paurusso, your CFO. Got a rhyme when I get up here always. So the first conversation that we had about this was actually an email that we received from Kirk Peterson, who I believe is the chief operating officer for NCAT. And he basically, he and I had been in some communication a couple of months ago about the logistics of the agreement between the county, how it related to NCAT and this expansion. I had clarified that, if you'll recall, the commission did authorize an agreement with Wichita Airport Authority and some others related to the expansion at the site. But in terms of the sewer connection, yes, that just came up about two weeks ago, recognizing that this was something that needed to happen in consultation with legal. It was not something I was able to authorize to say to go ahead and do that, nor was Lynn able to authorize it. Because we don't have a meeting for another two weeks, we did ask to do this as an off-agenda item because we did not want to cause any delays in their construction, recognizing that their project is moving forward. So that's why, yes, I did ask if we could have this as an off-agenda item.
Okay. I know they plan on breaking ground here pretty quickly.
Right.
So just to be clear, the sanitary sewer that serves the current facility is not a city connection? So just to be clear, the sanitary sewer that serves the current facility is not a city connection?
I don't believe so. I'm going to let, or actually, it is a city connection, but it's on county land. So I'm going to let Lynn clarify if I said that incorrectly.
Because what confuses me is this is a city, this building's on the city property. I guess I'm surprised it requires a resolution to connect the new building.
Well, it's our building, so it's county property versus city property. So that's why they have to have an okay to connect to our building.
Okay, so the new building's on county property?
The new building is on city property, but will connect to county property.
Okay.
And so because they are connecting city property to county property on which a city sewer line runs, they need our permission.
Is that really the main reason why we have this before, in front of us today?
Yes.
Okay. In terms of the relationship we have with NCAT, any obligations we might have, this doesn't have any other, any other?
None whatsoever.
All right. Thank you very much for the good explanation. Appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion. I move that the Board adopts the resolution as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Samantha, Justin, Lindsay, Lynn. Appreciate all the work and the quick work you did. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Budget discussion.
Okay, Commissioners, and for those in the public, we have an item on our agenda every week. In between recommended budget and adoption on August the 20th, we'd like to talk about any budget discussion items the Commission may have, that a way staff is prepared, that a way the Commissioners and colleagues are prepared, so they can have plenty of time and due diligence to analyze the issues and potential motions or potential ideas that are being floated around. So any comments under budget discussion? Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, we had our Citizens Advisory Board meeting Monday evening and presentation of the budget to the Board members and had a really good, and thank you, Lindsay, for being there. Thank your staff for preparing the PowerPoint very thorough and we had a really robust discussion and including the areas that some of the departments that will be growing, so to speak, such as 911. And anyway, it was really good and it was well-received and at the end of the day, they voted that they're in favor of the budget as recommended. So it was, and we even had some citizens in the, in the audience that voiced some questions as well. So it was a good, it was a good meeting. I was glad. Thank you. Just reporting that back from the advisory board.
Very good. Any other questions under budget discussion or any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Next item, please.
Federal grants discussion.
Okay, do we have anything, any updates under federal grants discussion? Okay, we'll keep moving. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Okay, Commissioners, anything under committee reports that you'd like to share with the public? Okay, seeing none. Next item.
Other.
Anything under other?
Chairman, I'd like to share something under other.
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please.
Okay, I just wanted to make mention that I have my District Advisory Board meeting coming up on Tuesday, July 29th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. We hold our Citizens Advisory Board meetings at the Goddard District Conference Center at 315 South Main Street. We will also have the budget presentation from County Manager Tom Stoles at this meeting. So if anybody from the public would like to sit in and listen to the presentation, they are welcome to come.
Okay, very good. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Anything else under other? Okay, I would just go back to the county announcements, just a reminder, we have our first public meeting July the 30th. So at 6:00 p.m. right here in this room in the refum building. My first couple of years in the first couple of budgets, that has not always been wildly attended. So this is an opportunity to come at a convenient time to come and really give input and feedback and listen in about the recommended budget and advise the Commission before adoption. This is something that I know all five Commissioners has publicly said, that we really want people's insight. We want their feedback before we shape and finalize this budget. So again, want to, want to say, want to encourage you, please come July the 30th, 6:00 p.m. And that'll be the first of two. The second one will be on August the 20th, and that's the same day we adopt. So as much input we can get, we would appreciate it. Okay, anything else under other? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
Okay, we do have an executive session. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 60 minutes until, let's just call it, let's do 64 minutes. We'll return at 11:00 a.m. For consultation with legal counsel for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss an ongoing lawsuit involving Cedric County. And that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 11:00 a.m.
Okay, that's a motion. I'll give a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, folks, we're going to, we'll be in executive session. We'll be back here in this room to finish the meeting at 11:00 a.m. See you then.
Okay everyone, thank you for your patience. We've just returned from executive session. There was no binding action taken today during executive session. Is there anything else that needs to come before the commission? Okay seeing none, time is 11:01 and we are officially adjourned. Have a great day.